We'll hit record anyway, because.
Yeah, the button.
It is recording now. I have no idea what this test is going to do. Maybe it will just run in the background. If not, goodbye, Bob Singer. Thank you.
So we were on page five. There weren't a lot of things that I had found, because again, I wasn't. I didn't see anything significant that would be. Additions or corrections, just some capitalizations. Lot size, I know that. I'll probably beat that up some with this last project, so. Unless you're one, unless you're interested in changing the lot size. You know, twelve thousand square feet. Is, what is that, about a third of an acre? Which if you got us onsite septic systems, you're gonna be that or larger, but there's a chance this could be used for a sewer development in the future. Probably time to adjust it later.
I, I think, you know, we're, we're working on. What Holly's calling a clustered. Residential conservation district. Uh, which is less than twelve thousand square feet. So anyone, and that will have a general overlay. Over most of the town, not all of the township, but wherever the township has access to sewers. So I think that might. Take the place of this in those areas.
But most of these other standards here seem pretty comparable to what you've seen in other places. Is that right?
I think so. I mean, we don't. There are some things that we just don't. See a lot just from a county standpoint, because it happens at township levels as far as. Drive driveway setbacks, but I mean. You have a variety of lot widths, so that you are providing people with some flexibility. Without allowing them all to be eighty feet, which again, at that, at a lot size that has onsite, that's gonna be. Tough to get narrow lots like that.
One thing that we added to the Steiner PRCD is a variation in the front setback. So that you had have a minimum of five feet difference between adjoining. Homes. And I'm not sure that's. I'm not sure that's got picked up in here. It's, it's part of their development plan.
Yeah, I think we just. Made them add that because of the way they had it designed. I don't know that we need to have that in the.
Oh, but in, in, um, in my copy of it, under L, I've got to add variation in front setbacks.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I don't think that got picked up in anywhere else.
I mean, if. So sixty. A little odd to see this, usually the front setback in a developed area would be from the. Right of way, because that's what's gonna be in your, that's what you can easily measure in your mind. Whereas FR one lots and A one lots are from center line. So your. Center line in a. Interior street is gonna be probably the, at least thirty feet of width, so you're. That puts you at a thirty foot setback, which is probably comparable. For a lower density development. Uh, I mean, just going off what you'd said, that I think just adding a phrase, some variation. I mean, obviously, the minimum would be whatever the number is, but then some variation is encouraged.
Um, it was what, what we had in the, in the Steiner PRCD was, was a five, a minimum of five feet variation from. Okay, one home to the next.
But if we run into something that is. Not able to do that because of where septic has to be located and soil types and things like that, are we willing to say? No to a PRCD because they can't accommodate that. I, I think I like your thought of, you know. Where possible, let's do this, but I don't think we should make it a, a steadfast thing. You absolutely must do this, because we might run into some. Just physical limitations based on the land.
But if it's not in here, then. It won't get, and most development plans won't pick it up.
And that's fine, but I, I do think, I don't think we should make it a hard line. You know, you have to do this. I think we should encourage is sufficient.
And maybe we could mix those. Two together and say a variation of five feet. Is encouraged. Or.
Or we just leave it as a variance. I mean, you know, I think Joe had to come through, come, come back to us with one variance because of. Not being able to.
Well, they've gotta come to us for their plan anyway, with their, their plan, and if we don't like the way it's looking on paper. That I think is perfectly acceptable to ask them to stagger. The fronts a little bit.
But would it be nice to have the legal document fall back on?
That's why, though, if it says encourage. They can try to do that, and they know that ahead of time, so they're not wasting millions of dollars having somebody drop a plan that we're immediately gonna say, hey, we really want. Variation between these setbacks, just say, encourage the variation. If they can do it, great. If they can't, then. You know, that's something that we can then decide, are we willing to say no to this PRCD? Or are we okay with the fact that there's no variation?
Or we could do that by variance anyway, but.
But wouldn't it be, i- in my opinion, it would be best to not have a bunch of variances. Like, I don't, I don't think we should. Create something that we don't have any straight PRCDs within the township, because every single one has a variance somewhere. That seems like. A headache and a half to try to keep track of.
Does leaving it ambiguous put us up against like potential legal action if we? Deny it, beca- deny the PRCD because they're like, you can't put a variance in the houses and. We think it looks bad, so no, you can't have this. Can they come?
They say you only encouraged it.
Yeah, you only encouraged it, so we've done nothing, right?
I don't know the character necessarily, the group. Beyond what I already know, but. I mean, do you all think that you would turn it down because of that? I. I think you're gonna be arguing over density and landscaping details. Or, you know, number of. I mean, not specific number of trees, but. This isn't enough landscaping as opposed to. Most roads are gonna be curved anyway, and so you're not gonna get that. Everybody's in a row.
Yeah.
At this density, I think you're, you're not gonna be having straight shot streets where all the houses are lined. But I think it's okay doing, wha- what have we just encouraged now? And then there'll be a second, you know, when all, when I make all these actually in the document. There'll be one more review, and if you feel like talking about that some more.
And, and as far as what you're saying about the right of way, I think that, that may be. Why is it this way and not, uh? Not the right, why is it from the center line of the street and not from the right of what you're saying?
I think it's because all of our, all of our things are from the center line.
And he's saying that it's more common. In a subdivision to do it from the right away, because that's what you can see easily.
Just to have a center line of the street, so.
What does the right of way mean? Is that like the side of the road?
Basically, and sidewalks and water lines, whatever. We don't know where those are. Easements. Yeah, but I'm, a lot of times on something like this, we have them. Have a easement, and on an internal street like this, it doesn't really have a big water line going down.
Well, it'll, it'll have a water line somewhere.
A pu- a private or public street. An interior subdivision street is usually just sixty feet. I mean. No matter what you're trying to put in it. That they'll, they'll do whatever the requirement is to, to the traffic study, so. I mean, unless you're right out at the entrance and it's a, it's a big subdivision, you're widening out to maybe seventy or whatever, but yeah, within that sixty feet is the road. Usually the tree lawn and any sidewalk. And then it's right at the edge behind that. Or the, if it's an open ditch and. Trees, I mean, that's still. If a road is about twenty seven or twenty feet, twenty eight feet wide, then that still gives you plenty of. Room on either side. So it's, I would just say it's always sixty. So you might as well just know this is basically a thirty foot setback. From. The edge of the sidewalk. And as long as you know that, then it's fine. Measure.
Could we word it in there both ways? Where is that?
I wondered what your. RD currently says.
I think everything else is center line.
Our line seemed like a more clear cut. Place to measure from. If the right of way can be kind of here and there.
I don't know.
I mean, there are situations where the. Right away might be a little bit wider to accommodate some. Grainage or something, but I don't. Usually you're. The entity, well, county engineer is trying to. Put the minimum right away, because they know that either they and county road or the township and a township road are gonna maintain it. So they don't want it to be wider than it needs to be.
I don't see anything in the PRG.
Just that it has to be developed in their compliance with the approved plans.
Well, I suggest we just leave it.
Anything else on, on that page?
I don't think so. Remember anything else being that we did differently for the one we did.
W- we talked about condominiums and you were gonna take that verbiage out, I recall.
I was gonna make that multi-family.
Okay.
Make sure.
And we talked about in the definition somewhere, defining all the different types of dwelling.
Um, I don't know, uh, uh, I'm, my page numbering is different than yours, because I printed this off on. In our building height. Were we at thirty five or forty five feet?
Under building height requirement? Yeah, on page six.
I didn't, I didn't have a change. Are you, what are you asking?
It should be thirty, everything else in the township is thirty five. Um, except for some commercial structures that we're talking about in the mixed use area. But everywhere else is thirty five.
That's more common, just to my ear.
Yeah.
Among townships.
Is there any reason in this to put in, I mean, this says a minimum of a, basically a single. Space garage, two hundred and forty square feet for the garage. Is there any reason, I, I know that some of the other districts, we've doubled that, or actually gone, I think, to five hundred and sixty for a two car garage. This is on, um, the bottom of S.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're saying a one story building could, could be just nine hundred square feet. You know, you want the two car garage, it's gonna be half the size of the house.
That would be interesting. No, I think that's a good point.
And I don't know, off the top of my head, how big is a, is that single car, do you think?
That's a, that's a sing- that's a single car, yeah.
Well, I mean, you're gonna have a two car garage.
Well, it does say minimum, so. They can have a two car garage if they want.
I guess there could be a day where. We're gonna have fewer instead of more.
I can't not have a garage.
Right. And then again, that preservation section, I think I wrote myself a note, although I haven't read it in a month, but. I think a lot of the things that were under design guidelines and that other kind of. Here's what you could do are now under this preservation area, so they're all under. One spot instead of. You know, there was that how to design, and then there was the, here are the recommended, here are the requirements. Now it's in the, in the common space. So it's not really new language, it's just all put there.
Um, under, under preservation, number one, retain or replant native vegetation. So retain is keeping what's already there. Replant, I'm not sure what, whether that means.
If it's got all messed up during construction, then you gotta.
But does that, does that restore native vegetation?
Yeah, cuz like in the Fling property, they're not cutting anything down, but we're still asking them to put in. A bunch of new vegetation.
I mean, I, that's existing language, but I, I do think there's probably a better way to say it than replant would be to replace.
Yeah, or re- I mean, I have restore, but, um.
I guess re- restore is. Gives you a little bit more flexibility.
Restore native vegetation.
Say, well, if you're gonna take five out, you gotta put five back. As opposed to just restoring.
Yeah.
I think that would be the better word.
What are you saying?
Restore. I'm agree, yeah, agreeing.
Native vegetation adjacent to wetlands and surface waters. And. I think in, in the Steiner development, we actually asked them to put in more. Native vegetation than, than in, just in those. Areas, wetlands and, and surface waters.
Well, number two also talks about. Retaining vegetation.
Well, again, this whole section has more to do with preserving what's there. Whereas I think you. Item U gives you landscaping. Uh, the idea that they would give you a landscaping plan, now it doesn't say how many pieces and how many. Trees and all that caliber and all that, but.
We had also asked for. Wetlands to be made as opposed to some other water retention. System has that.
I think that might come under F stormwater. Um, features shall be designed to manage stormwater. Retention or detention, I wasn't sure which word, and prevent erosion, flooding and standing water.
Can, can we do more in there to encourage having? A wetland with native plantings and, and things like that, as opposed to just. Here's your goose pond, you're done.
We're saying features. Uh, which leaves it, it opened, but it's not, maybe it's not specific enough to say.
Uh, or could we do the same thing in this instance where we say we're encouraging? Wetlands as opposed to just retention ponds?
Well, some areas are not gonna be suitable for wetlands, but are not.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying. You know, that was something we asked. Specifically for with Joe and. He was, he was very good at, you know, taking what we asked and trying to accommodate, but. I think there's still some sense in having it written somewhere for future developers who. Are reading through this.
Maybe something like. You know, natural. Natural, you know, options for water. Management are encouraged. Where feasible or something like that.
Yeah, and I would want it to be an encouragement because. There, there would be aspects that could be. There will be parts that are maintained by the soil and water conservation district, and despite their name, which is great. They want a way to manage so that there's not a bunch of stuff falling in the water over time, and so there may be needs to have, there may be. Areas where the need is, that it looks more like a goose pond. But that doesn't mean that the areas that lead to it can't look more natural.
Yeah.
So. I think having that. Having an encouragement in there to, to try to do something.
Yeah.
Would be good.
Good.
I'll have to, yeah, I'll come up with that.
Okay.
Language.
And is it retention or deti- I mean, retention means you hold it. Don't let it out. Detention means you hold it and let it out slowly, I think.
Yeah.
Bruce, are we?
I always have to think through myself.
And I think it's really detention that we're trying. We're not gonna hold all the water on the, on the parcel. It's gonna run off. But it should run off at a rate that's not in excess of what.
But it is, correct?
Yeah. Or at least as slow as it. As it was.
I think there may be some places in our, our book here that. Used retention slash detention, because we could not.
We didn't know, yeah. And one thing that I had added, and I don't know if, if, if it, if it got into your version of it, at the end, um. Prevent erosion, flooding or standing water. And then I added within the development and on downstream properties. Which. Which we're trying to put into a lot of the. wording in here, so we, we don't get.
I'm sorry, Tom, I just looked up what it, it says online and it says. The detention ponds hold water temporarily, whereas retention ponds. Contain water permanently, so we're typically looking for detention.
Detention, yeah. Yeah, and detention could be a wetland or a pond, and I don't think it. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Now, Tom, you're saying that you're trying to put language in that it can't. Have an impact on. Standing water in downstream properties.
Within the development and on downstream properties, and that's, that, I mean, that, that is, in my understanding, it's, it's part of. The legislation which says. When you do a development, you can't adversely affect. Properties that are downstream. With more water than they were getting before.
Yeah, county engineer is gonna.
Yeah, you shouldn't be.
Do that study.
Affecting.
Leave that to any property.
Upstream properties either by putting a dam of some sort in. It'll just.
Yeah, we, we, we heard that, Bob.
Isn't this something that?
So you know.
That is also true in just. Straight zoning, there's not supposed to be. Any adverse reactions to neighboring properties, but on the flip side, we've been told by the county. Until it's a big enough problem that somebody complains to us, then US township can't really do anything about it. Is this one of those scenarios that? I mean, we can say it all we want, but can't do anything about it?
Um, no, we can still insist on it.
It does.
There's just no enforcement.
It does depend on the development side. I mean, if you're doing a five acre lot, it's a different. Ballgame than if you're doing a, a developed. Project that has a street, because then you're definitely creating. Yeah, there's, there's just a different set of, set of rules. Actually, someone from the. County engineer's office, I'm gonna try to rope him into a zoning inspector. Meeting coming up, just to walk us all through that.
Okay.
That would be it.
In the subdivision process, I just kinda trust that they'll take care of it, but I realize that. There's this back and forth with townships and the swollen water, and they're like, well, yeah, if you're writing your zoning, then it gives us more authority, but then. Townships usually say we don't want it in our zoning, because then it falls on the township to then go out and manage.
Well, and I feel like we've been told several different ways, you know, say that they can't do it, but you can't do anything when they don't do it, and so I just. We need to have it clear somewhere.
That's a good point.
Going back to preservation number five. I think Johnny has been. Each year is to say preserve historic or known archaeological sites. Is that right?
No, if you inadvertently discover something that is a significant site, you are supposed to preserve it.
Okay, we'll leave it the way it is.
Is the way that that's worded? Like to have earthworks burial grounds, does that imply that those are the only two things that we're looking for?
EG means, for example.
Okay.
Exemplia gratia. There should be a comma after the EG, but.
But et cetera, after grounds.
That would be fine.
And in number six, where we're talking about. Protect drainage wells and creeks, no construction of buildings shall take place inside. The one hundred year floodplain. Um, and then I had or within stormwater drainage features to pick up, protect the natural drainage. Um, and I don't know who would be building inside a stormwater drainage feature, but. It never hurts.
That'd be silly.
You can do it all the time.
They're all for preservation?
Yeah, that's, that's what we already want.
Scott, is it pretty much county protocol for these subdivisions to only be parking on one side of the street?
No, it goes back to the width of the road.
Okay.
And. I think there probably, there are some standards that are probably wider than they need to be. Um, planners are always talking about how the roads are too wide, and engineers are typically just wanting to get cars through. As safely and quickly as possible. So there's always kind of attention there, but.
Yeah.
I think if you just wanted to do a typical, whatever that width is, and I don't have the numbers. On top of my head, but. You could agree to do parking on both sides, or you can say, can we do this width if we'll commit to only having parking on one side? And so that's how. The signs get put on one side that says no parking this side, because it's a choice of the developer not to do. A fully wide street, and there's rarely a need. To have it that wide anyway.
Okay.
That's kinda, that's basically my understanding of how that.
I was guessing it's mostly for fire trucks and such.
Yeah.
Have a little more difficulty.
Well, but that goes back to.
But if the street were wider, you could have park and both sides and a fire truck down the street. Okay.
I'm down at double A. I don't know if anybody else is.
I was gonna say divergences are probably an important thing to look at, just to make sure you're good with it.
Um, and so we'd been talking in the, in the planning committee about. With the exception of, so where this is, you know, we may grant divergences from any standard or requirement in this section with the exception of. Density and percentage of required open space, and we had wanted to add, I believe, permitted uses. So we can't. As part of our function, take a permitted use. And say, no, you can use it, you know, you can, you can build outside of what those permitted uses are. Um, and we felt, at least during the, at, during the committee, that we were gonna write that into the existing, to the, to the pending. Districts.
So that it's not even a question?
Yeah.
That probably makes sense.
So I put permitted uses right after the word exception. The exception of permitted uses first, density second, percentage of required open space.
Um, it's helped me understand permitted uses, please, like what? What could you envision somebody trying to do? Outside of the, like, normal usage, but.
It goes back to business.
More than twenty percent open space, I mean, sorry, more than twenty percent multifamily. Or whatever we're allowing, and they say. You know, we want forty percent multifamily and.
Yeah.
They're saying no.
Two has the list of permitted uses in.
Well, yes, but F. Says that. Under permitted uses, other uses which, in the opinion of the zoning commission, advance. Under permitted uses, other uses which, in the opinion of the zoning commission, advanced. Well, Tom, are you talking? The example you gave. If we were to limit it to that. And say percentages of other uses.
Well, that's. I think what. Other uses, I think maybe other recreational uses, because that, in my mind, that's what it was really referring to. And not. Not open space and not the dwellings. And I would, I would frankly prefer to leave that up to the HOA, but at some point.
So like if they're wanting to take some of their open space into like a community pool or something like that, is that along the lines of what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Well. We're gonna put the change to divergences which we put. What are other, with this and say recreation? Other uses to recreate. And not a commercial panel. Okay, so I'll add that word. How can you hear that noise?
What was that? I'm sorry.
We're getting a weird. Sticky noises.
No, I'm, I'm hearing it well.
Wake off and see.
Can we give you the handheld mic? Maybe that'll fix it.
Um, Kendra says it doesn't work.
You talk really loudly, you can get to this.
Could be swapped for Bruce and yours and then.
And then if you have a comment, you get it.
Engineer.
That was fancy. Okay. Sounds better at least. Okay, so then management of the open space. As soon as that section's renumbered, I can. I mean. That first red item on the bottom of under thirteen oh six A. It basically just refers to itself. I could put this section, I guess, since that's. I did that in case something got renumbered. Um, but everything in here is the same. Or is it, throws most of it back on the HOA. I think in this case. Where that condominium is referenced, I think it's okay in that case, because if for some reason. There was an area that was condo. They would need that agreement, so.
So under four dedication easements. Um, it has to be offered to the township, it can't be. A requirement of the development plan. As far as public access to. To the open space, whether it's. Active or passive open space or whatever we're calling it.
Uh, the township isn't even required to accept it if it's offered.
Right, but it, but if the township. Wants it. It's not an automatic. The, the HOA has got to. Or the developer has got to offer.
Are you, is that a previous conversation? Is that why you're?
Under, at the planning committee, not here, I don't think.
We do talk about in that first paragraph under A. A public land dedication not exceeding ten percent of total parcel size may be required by the township.
Where is that?
Right under A. Section thirteen oh six A. That first paragraph.
Public land dedication, yeah, let's recite it. Okay. That's more connectivity than.
I'm not sure why you would limit yourself to.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, I mean, if you needed connectivity and it ended up being a huge, I don't know.
Fifteen percent.
Sounds a lot, I guess, when it's just a narrow path going somewhere, but it. Hate to put that in there and they be limited, and suddenly you needed eleven percent, and you couldn't get it.
We just take that entire phrase out, not exceeding ten percent of the total parcel size, and just got public land dedication may be required.
I think so, I mean, unless that was some legal case that was. Figured somewhere and that's why it's here, but I don't.
You don't know, Ben.
I mean, you're not. Preventing yourself from at, from. Asking for what. The community would need. So I would just, yeah, I think that terms a little bit of.
And whatever land dedication is, it's for that. It's for that purpose of connectivity, not for other purposes, so. I don't see anything else in that. Section. One of them changes to HOA and. Capitalizing development plan.
Doing a. Better procedure?
Um, you know, I've got here, though, like if you have no, um, maintenance of common open space. So it, it's the, it's the HOA's responsibility to maintain the common open space, but if they fail to do that, the township can step in. I guess. This is B two. And I don't have any changes to that, I, I think.
Only, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, is there any statutory? Outline that, that a road has to be taken over by a township?
Uh, I don't. I don't think so. I mean, my understanding is the county. I mean, people bring in. Projects, and if it's a common access driveway, then it's a, it's limited to a certain number of lots, and that can be a private drive. But any other street has to be built to the same standard, and it's the developer's choice on whether they make it. Private or public. There probably, there has to be something somewhere that says. If a public road is. You know, inspected and. Accepted by the. County engineer. To those standards, then. The local township has to. I assume. Otherwise, there'd be townships all over that would be saying, we're not gonna take any more roads.
Cause it's been very expensive to the township. When some of these roads are a.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, huh, yeah, how many? I'm trying to think through how many subdivision roads. Like strictly internal.
Estates now, which is new, so, you know, it won't, but Keller Pines has cost.
Yeah.
A lot of money to, to fix and maintain.
True.
How much of that is because they put it in wrong in the first place?
But once, I don't, I don't know, but, but once. It was established, the township. Took it over, and then now the township's responsible and has, you know. I wanna say a couple hundred thousand dollars. I, I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know specifically. That arrangement.
So that's normal to have the township or the city or whatever take over a neighborhood road when it's created. Versus having the neighborhood be responsible for it.
Most of the roads in the county are. If, if there be simple, that separated lots in a subdivision, it's their township roads. There's probably a. I don't say breaking point, there's, there's a point where. The population. Supports. I'm sure any township that just has a few, yeah, it's tough. But then as you get more population. Going into that fund. It helps, I'm not saying that solves it, but. Yeah, every, I mean, Orange Township, Liberty's dealing with. Paving roads, and you'd think they'd have plenty of. Funding to do with. And what makes it more expensive, although Keller Pines is kind of the opposite, because it's the smaller quarter acre. Lots, the more frontage you have, the more pavement per lot has to be. Maintained, and that lot is only putting so much into. The road fund. Um, so actually. The roads are more affordable in a higher density neighborhood than it is, you know, in the two acre. Is it Hoover Woods? Is that the one you? I lose track of the titles.
That answer your question, Bob?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, moving on to procedures.
Yeah.
Were, were, were we still talking about making this a standalone article that could be used for? Either the planned residential or the clustered residential, or how do you feel about that?
Uh, Mike. It's Cabler called. A week or so ago to. Give me a heads up about what was coming in on the review side for the. Other overlays. And we discussed that we wouldn't change what we're currently moving forward with. So I think this would continue to be in here because it's an overlay. And the, the goal would be to make. The new one very similar to this, if not exactly the same, but. The nature of the overlay. Suggests that it should all be in one. Document. Or one article. Whereas the, the.
Those are mixed use.
Maybe it was, yeah.
I mean, what, what were? What the hearing on, um, two Mondays from now, and I think the documents that, that you received recently. From the township or from zoning. Offered mixed use overlay districts. Um, and a procedure for applying for a mixed use overlay district, so there are two separate articles.
Yeah, we got a procedure and then we got a.
The district itself.
District, yeah.
Um, and so we, we've talked. At length about whether we should do the same for the conservation districts. Since we'll have one without sewer and one with sewer, otherwise their. Densities are different because of the sewers, but otherwise they. Pretty much the same. Um, and whether we can work from one. Procedure.
Yeah.
I know there's some reference to have it embedded in the article. The same way in two different articles and. There's some preference for having it separated so that you don't have to keep. Making adjustments from one article to another when you make one change.
Yeah, I mean, the good thing is it's all in one spot, so it would be easy to break it out. But I think when Mike. And I. Chatted, cause he walked me through all that, and I said, so what, what do you want me? Are we gonna change what we had been moving forward to do? And our, what we were gonna do was switch out or. Separate out the PRD. Because it's a rezoning, and so it's a separate. Document, but he said we would. For now, we would proceed the way we were going to, which is, this is gonna be in the same, it's just another section in the article. But again. That'd be easy to change later because it's all its own section, and so that'd be easy to move it out, and then have to add some language. To reference back to wherever that was. But there's a lot of moving parts right now, so it would be.
Yeah. And I suppose if, if we make any changes to the PRCD, it has to go up. Through, you know, the hearing process. At our level, at the trustees level, and then potential of a referendum.
Yeah.
Going forward.
Yeah, all these red marks we're making now would. Will be eventually, when you're done, you'll initiate them, they'll still go to RPC and then come back. And then go to trustees.
So maybe you could walk us through, un, unless there's gonna be no change to the procedure. Which I would be surprised, but. Just walk us through the steps in the application process.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of strike throughs in red, but. It basically. I think it says the same thing that it did before. It's just that it's. All that existing features area was. In kind of a. That, that visionary, here, here's how you should design it, and not under the requirements, and so now. Just capturing that A. In one spot, and again, even though it's all red, a lot of that language is literally just pulled from. The A and the B below. They both are talking about the site analysis, which is basically a sketch plan, essentially, but. Um, so that, those are both merged into A, which is now all red. And that's the conceptual development plan, I think your old language. All you. All the developer had to do was bring you. Here's what's on the site. And then you're walking the site, looking at, well, yeah, there's the stream and there's the. The ditch and there's the woods, but. They're gonna have a sketch in their mind. It seemed like it's kind of a waste to walk the site and not have at least a sketch of what they're. So. That's all put there under A. And up, I mean, everything will be relettered, of course, but then there's the walkabout, which is the same language.
That's gonna be B now.
Yeah.
And that would really be. I don't know, we're saying site analysis is one. Conceptual development plan is two. But they're both under A.
Yeah, it's like one page, one page is your natural features, and then you turn the page and it's. The. Development plan.
Then the walkabout. Then.
And then that's the end of the kind of informal part, then they actually prepare the application and the. I, I wrote a note to myself after I had. Published this and sent it to you that we probably just need to call it the development plan. Cause there's no preliminary. So the word final doesn't need to be in there, and there's at least two that I see with my eye, so.
Yeah, I, and I, yeah.
I would just strike all the final, all the references to final. Because it is just the development plan. I would just strike all the final, all the references to final, because it is just the development plan.
Um, and there's probably no reason to. You know, the application is the application. It's not the first, it's not a preliminary, it's not.
Yeah.
Final, it's, it's not a formal, it is just the application.
And then one recommendation, and I would make this in, in anything that you do is just to, to reference the number of copies that you determine. Either by the zoning commission or by the trustees. And then as. Technology changes and you realize, I don't know why we're getting thirteen copies, then you can change that because we've. We've changed that a lot in our office, just. Thought we needed ten, then we thought, well, you know, we really just need five and then now we have a new system and we really only need one and.
And nobody uses that one.
Yeah, so that's just safer. And if you want to add more, it's easier to change that policy at the beginning of the year than it is to amend your zoning code.
I, I, I don't see any problem with it.
Somewhere in here, do, do we need to mention that we are, have strongly encouraged? Developers to have preliminary meetings with us? I thought we were working on something to that.
Yeah, I thought we had something too. We wanted to make it a requirement.
Before the actual application, you said before the, I guess the development plan.
Yeah, cause when they get to that point, they don't want to change anything.
Yeah. So that would have to come after the walkabout.
Well, since we took out A and B and the walkabout is C, we could hypothetically. Add some stuff in there because we got some letter missing. Two letters because we got D out too.
Well, I thought we had worked out some kind of language on there, but I don't remember what I did with it.
What did we call preliminary meetings or preliminary?
I thought we had taken it from wherever, there's somewhere else in the zoning code where it says something about preliminary meetings and I thought we had just basically pulled that right over.
I cannot tell you where that is right now.
It's a PRD.
And we've got.
It's good.
We've, we've got a preliminary meeting sequence and procedure, so we've got a public information sheet on preliminary meetings. We had something else.
There's one, there's some on the PRD. But. Six eleven, eleven point oh six, it says, the applicant is encouraged to engage in informal consultations with the zoning commission.
Yeah.
Prior to. Statement by officials of the township or the county, maybe I'll be binding upon either. I don't know if that's exact language we want to put in there because I don't think it exactly fits.
It's close.
What we're going for, but yeah, we could, we could build off of that.
Which section did you say that was?
Six, eleven point oh six, letter A. Second paragraph under application.
And this is on, in the PRD.
This is the PRD under procedure.
It's a jump up, I don't even see it, no procedure.
And then it's under A, it's the second paragraph under A.
I mean, I think that's good.
I don't know if I'd call it informal consultations.
Yeah, I feel like we should just call it a meeting, like preliminary meeting.
Paid preliminary meetings or something, there's a, I mean.
There is a fee with it too.
Yeah, so I think we want to call out.
You're right, because you don't want that to be interpreted as, well, I'll call two or three people on the commission and just chat.
Right.
Which might be okay, but you did, you want them to come to a meeting.
Yeah, technically they're not informal, they're formally scheduled preliminary meetings.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to note that there is in fact a fee for those meetings.
And I think it is also important that being understood that no statement by officials of the township or county shall be binding. I think that's good to throw in there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the request for an amendment of the zoning map comes out because it's an overlay. And the wording, uh, prior to formal submission of a development plan when we're calling it. Application and development plan, I. I mean, informal meetings and a formal submission, I guess it's all right. I, I agree. I think, I think it belongs after sidewalk about.
Okay.
And. If maybe, maybe we don't call them informal, we call them preliminary meetings, because there is a charge.
Right.
Is it strongly recommended or is it requires? I mean, do we use the word strongly or do we say?
Yeah.
Shall be.
We're some of us to require it.
Us wanted to require it, but others didn't. Thought they have to pay for it, so that was.
Yeah, so, so that's my thing. I would love to require it, but then should we call it, like, should it be? Its own separate fee or can we just itemize? That within the fees, you know, you've got your acreage fee, your application fee, your preliminary meeting fee. You know, it seems, it seems odd to require it and have that fee. Listed separately than the other fees.
The, the issue was that some people thought they didn't need it and when they came to us, what they brought to us was bad.
Well, then they wasted their money and, you know, if they wanted to submit something else, they have to come back and pay all those non-refundable fees again.
Right. The, uh, they would have been better off just, just paying for the preliminary meeting fees and.
I think the other thing that we had some hesitation with though is if we require the preliminary meetings, they meet with us. And they bring something that we still don't like. We then look like the bad guy because we made you pay this five hundred dollars for this meeting. We told you what we wanted, but we're still not happy. So that I think was our, our sort of.
Well, for the one way to see, they can have up to two meetings.
Yeah.
And, and I think, um, I think it's our responsibility, responsibility at those meetings to be clear about what we expect. And if they come back with something else, that's not our problem. No.
I think if you've had a walkabout, are you saying this is after the walkabout?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like they should get some idea. I mean, the bad, the bad thing they bring you should be the very first one where it's just their sketch. And you walk the side and you say, here's what we expect you to do, then you would think that the. Preliminary meeting would be better. I know.
Think that.
I know, I know, I've seen.
We also.
People not listen.
We have only dealt with one of these before. So, you know, I think we can say, well, in a perfect world, it'll go this way, but I don't, I don't think any of us can truly say that because we've only done one and we did it with Joe who's done. So many other things within the township. So I don't think any of us can say, but we, this is how it's gone in the past.
But, but we have, have strongly encouraged preliminary meetings for all planned districts. We've done it for planned commercial districts. We did it for the planned residential Keller Pines thing.
Yeah.
So we have, these are something that just should be considered. Required.
Well, but I think that's, that's what's.
Recommended.
Well, that's what Scott is asking, you know, it's either strongly recommended, if that's the, the wording that we're using or shall engage is, you don't have a choice. And I, I'm, I'm comfortable with shall engage in preliminary meetings.
Can, can we put something in there about shall, shall engage in at least two? Additional preliminary meetings can be requested at however many dollars per meeting?
I don't want to.
Currently listed fee.
No, you don't put the fees in this because that, that has to be determined every year.
Yeah.
But you can say the currently published fee or something like that, because I think it's important to note that there's a fee, this is not free ninety-nine.
Yeah. I do think though, uh, as far as fees are concerned, we should embed it in the PRCD fee. When we do that, instead of, like, if we're going to require it, it, the fee should just be embedded in there instead of. You know, having here's your PRCD fee, here's your straight application fee, way down at the bottom of the list are preliminary meeting fees. Like that should, that should be included if it's required.
Well, that's something that the, the trustees have to set out at their organizational meeting.
Yes, but it's something, who had the list? Somebody had a list of things that we needed to remember at the.
How's he gonna say, make a note?
At the end of the year, yeah, that's. Sherry had one at one point, but Mike, when you can, when you watch the recording, Mike Cannon, you have to start a list.
What were we saying, shall?
I'm fine with that. Especially for something like this, I think.
Good for you, shall.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. And I think having two worked into the fee, I mean, that's something that you can do on the fee schedule.
If we.
Not having to say two here.
Okay.
And again, you're not, it's not a rezoning, so it's.
So are we going to say a preliminary meeting or preliminary meetings? Just.
I think you need, well, I think you would require one. I think you'd require, you would use a reference to a meeting in your requirement.
Do we want to set a maximum, like?
You only get max, you only get two for the same fee.
Yeah, so they don't think they get more than two.
It's already listed in the fee schedule like that.
Okay. I just want.
But is there a time limit on those as well?
They always want to get it done faster than anybody can.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is like. Can we say, you know, you get from seven thirty to nine thirty and then if we are not finished going through things by then. You're coming back another time or you're choosing to submit, but. Say goodbye to your deposit if it's not good.
Let me just say up, a max, uh, up to two, two hour preliminary meetings. I mean, that's technically. So we do.
Okay, so prelimi- for the fee schedule for twenty twenty-three. Preliminary subdivision or planned district meetings, less than ten acres, two meetings for four hundred bucks. Ten acres or more, two meetings for five hundred bucks. Additional meetings at applicant request, four hundred dollars each. Is what is on our fee schedule this year.
All right. So. We can't be that specific in here because that's going to change every year.
Great.
And all we're saying is. It is more than one. I mean, right now it's more than one, it may, that may change too. We may decide we only need one.
Some, some people have decided they only need one.
Right.
And they want to move on.
Right, and we, we have not forced them to do more than that.
Right. Because it does delay things, you know.
Yeah.
Few weeks.
Especially, you know, if it's, if it's fairly cut and dried. And we go through it and we say, you know, we don't see any problems. Go, um. Um, I guess I'm okay, the applicant shall engage in a preliminary meeting with the zoning commission and. We want to include regional. Regional planning commission in that, I mean, I, I'm not sure that we need to put that in the.
I don't think any of them were at our meeting with Joe, were they?
No.
Now, he had his own separate meetings with you. I know, I mean, I saw.
Um, I mean, I can pull that same language over from. Eleven oh six, but reference. Consultation may include.
You know, I, you know, the zoning, the zoning inspector and the zoning commission. So the only difference between this preliminary meeting and the walkabout is that the walkabout is generally. Restricted to two members of the zoning commission, so it's not an official meeting. And I, I don't think we're going to change that. Um, and this would be an official meeting.
Right.
Is that? So we'll just. We just pull that text in from the PRD. And there is, uh, in this, in this paragraph, uh, what was? Thirteen oh seven E now D, um, the zoning commission may request comments from, from the RC, RC, RPC. PC or. And. I think that's, I think that's fine, that's. Probably what we're going to do anyway. One last question about, about that wording, we've had some. Some, some questions about whether we need to, to, uh, use the phrasing adjacent, adjoining contiguous to and across from. It's kind of boilerplate language and just. Anytime we talk about who needs to be notified, it's got to be in terms of. Those four categories. Sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. Is that typical of zoning resolutions or we just made it up?
I think that's.
No, I think that's the requirement, yeah.
So it should be that, that particular wording whenever we.
I'm pretty sure that came from the ORC.
Yeah. I mean, unless you want to put it, unless you want to refer to somewhere that it already is. Like back in the, how to, how to rezone. If you, if you get tired of referencing it every time. I mean, some townships have gone beyond that and said within. Five hundred feet of the property lines, but. The recommendation typically is if the ORC requires it, just leave it at that and then people can't say. I didn't know, be like, well, we use the definition of. Adjacent and across the street.
The BZA has different language for theirs. They have to notify within so many feet. So many hundred feet.
I mean, we used to be two hundred feet, right?
And we. That was only when John took the same BZA language that he wasn't supposed to.
Okay, so, so right now we're, we're this way, adjacent, adjoining contiguous across from and no.
And one of, and one of the easiest ways to do that for somebody is on the auditor's website, say you want everything within, you know, two hundred feet of something or other. Of, of a property and then they can just quickly figure out which properties those are.
Yeah. Um, we do require though, when we're doing this, that. A property under common ownership, if it's the. If it's the applicant's property cannot be one of these adjacent, adjoining contiguous to, that it's got to. It's got to be one beyond that. That you can't be your own contiguous property.
Is that? That specifically listed somewhere?
It, it, yeah, it is.
It are just normal.
I don't know whether it's in the definitions or, or. And we might have to. Maybe find that in, in. They added in here, but we're, I don't know.
I think it's on our application form.
It is not. At least not. Twenty-three.
Uh, well, twenty-seven is your amendments. And if your parcels. All owners of property within and contiguous to and directly across the street from such owners appearing on the contact orders, that tax list. But I think. I don't know about that, um. The part of if you're your own neighbor. Then what do you do? Do you capture then adjacent to that portion?
Yeah, we basically, even, even if that's not subject to whatever rezoning or overlay. We're basically saying it's a single property and you have to go to the next part of the.
Is it in our procedural guidelines, so I guess?
But it, it, it just seemed that it was. It was not notifying. Through neighbors.
Yeah, I can see the logic.
So, we get back with site analysis one. Conceptual plan and map or sketch. Uh, two, uh, walkabout. Three, which would just with the zoning inspector and one or two members of the commission. Um, preliminary meetings, meeting or meetings would be four. And then five would be the, the application and development plan.
Wait, I missed the number.
Well, we've got them as A, B, C, D.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to count them, you know, how many steps.
I was a step behind though.
Yeah, so A is, is site analysis and conceptual plan and sketch.
Yeah.
Walkabout is three, preliminary, four.
You skipped two.
What?
Walkabout is B or number two, right? The unofficial official meetings.
So this, this is, is this gonna be seen our preliminary meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then.
E would be the application and development plan.
Yep. Um, then. The zoning commission, public hearing. Is, I don't know where, where it's, whether it's in here, but it's the next step. And then following that, simply a trustee vote.
Yeah, F is, well, it wouldn't be F anymore, but it is here. On page thirty-two, the public hearing. I suppose that will end up being E. Action by township zoning commission would be F. Action by township trustees will be G. Subdivision plan would be H. And zoning certificate would be I. They all just get moved up one. Right?
Yeah. But the point is that the trustees. On receipt of the development plan and the zoning commissions and the recommendation of the zoning. Commission and the recommendation. Uh, from the Delaware Regional Planning Commission, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, the trustees shall, and I've stricken hold of properly advertised public meeting. They, they have essentially agreed that. As, as, as the public body, they should have the final say, but they will hold a. As part of their regular monthly meeting. And simply vote to uphold, modify, or overturn the.
I thought that was for all the, the new things, but not for the existing stuff.
I think.
Are they not going to hold public hearings on any rezonings?
Not, not this P R C, not this overlay.
They will on rezonings.
Okay.
But not on overlays.
Cause this is not a resume.
I don't know if there was a conversation about what they would do for overlays.
Yeah, I mean, there, there.
Just saying rezonings won't change because that's required. Well.
Okay, so.
Are we thinking about that?
I, I, I think it's a serious, a serious change that, I mean, we're trying to. Compress amount of time it takes and that's, that's at least thirty days to schedule a hearing and hold a hearing and. And if we're trying to compress our side of it. By trying to have these. Preliminary meetings. Can be done on a quicker rotation than. So that, that I think is. Isn't it, would be an important change to the, to the, the process.
So how are you?
So, so, but the, but are the choices of the trustees still the same? They can agree or modify or overturn?
Yes, yes, by a simple majority vote. Uh, to uphold, modify, or overturn the recommendation of the zoning commission. And then that last sentence can come out. If we move by a simple majority vote up to, uh, the trustees shall. Comma, by a simple majority vote, comma, uphold, modify, or overturn the recommendation of the zoning commission. And I don't know if I inserted it or, or, or it was in there before about the recommendation of the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Was that? Is that in the original text?
No, that was.
I can't tell who edited all this red stuff.
I don't have that.
Only me, but what do you? Where, where?
No, Tom, Tom did a whole bunch of editing on his own and, and unfortunately he didn't use the same, a different color.
I just. Though I think upon receipt of the development plan in caps. Comma, and either the, the zoning, the recommendation of the zoning commission. And the recommendation of the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, if we wanna leave that in. Or add that in. Uh, the trustee shall. By a simple majority vote. Uphold, modify, or overturn the recommendation of the zoning commission. Last sentence would. Be deleted. Since it's largely redundant. And so if it does say, uh. Uphold, modify, or overturn the recommendation of the zoning commission, then it doesn't make a lot of sense to have, also have a recommendation from. Regional planning commission and not have that mentioned again, so. I'm not sure if that really.
I don't think I would reference it there.
Okay.
I just think that. Our recommendation should be dealt with by the zoning commission.
That's. I, I'm comfortable.
And then whatever you send to the trustees is from the zoning commission.
Yeah, okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Again.
And I, so. Current letter G, action by the township zoning commission. I'm gonna make a suggestion that I just marked here.
Yep.
So the very first sentence is the township zoning commission may approve divergences they find are warranted by the design amenities incorporated. I would recommend striking that first sentence. And then starting that with the zoning commission shall recommend approval of the application of the PRCD. And development plan. With divergences as provided under thirteen oh five A A. And that just says, I don't even know that you need to reference divergences, but as long as it's there now. You might as well just say, as long as you follow the rules that you already said for divergences, I don't even know why that would. Certainly don't wanna open that door and say, oh, here's another place where.
Yeah.
We're gonna let you do divergences. So I think that'll just clear that up.
I, I, we just leave it out. You're saying it's not even bring the question of divergences up at this point.
I mean, I. It would make it simpler, you've already dealt with it, you have the ability to prove it, now you're just approving whatever the development plan is that you're.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So the commission shall recommend approval. Of the application of the PRCD. And development plan provided. It, uh, provided. The application and plan comply with the standards of section thirteen oh five. Do we even need that?
What is thirteen? Why did I put the process of article thirteen?
I mean, that's, it's all the development standard thing.
I mean, that is this article.
Is article thirteen.
Yeah. So thirteen oh five is the development standards. And the designs.
Yeah, but, and the process of, I must have taken something else out. And the process herein, I mean, I. It doesn't need to reference itself as article thirteen, because you're in thirteen.
Yeah.
I mean, uh. Aren't you just, I mean, at this point, if they haven't followed the right process.
Turn it down.
Yeah, but aren't, aren't you just, you're just recommending the development plan? I don't know why it says and that, basically it's saying and that they follow the right process, well, that's kind of.
Too late.
Is that necessary to put in there?
No, no.
I just, it is what it is, you're recommending that thing to the trustees, so I'll take that and the process of articles. Thirteen out. Okay.
About everything after provided. Did the application and plan comply with? So, we're, we're, we're either saying the zoning commission shall recommend approval, or in fact, shall recommend approval or denial. Is really. The options that we have. And we can take out. A lot of that, and it just, the zoning commission shall forward the development plan and their recommendation to the township trustees for their review. I mean, I, I, our recommendation is either up or down. Maybe with contingencies, but that's not really part of it.
Yeah. I mean, do you think there's some of that that needs to come out?
I would take out everything from, from the first sentence where you have the zoning commission shall recommend approval. I would just add or denial. And that kind of. That's, those are our options.
And then to the end of that sentence.
The application for the PRCD and development plan, and maybe with a period after development plan and. It's it.
And keep the last sentence of that paragraph?
The whole thing would come out after that. Cause we've already said, you know, either approval or denial.
But then.
Yeah, the, yeah, sorry, yes. And then that last sense would be what we do after we make our recommendation.
I mean, we could. It'll, you know, I'll mark it out, it'll still be there, but we'll see what it looks like without it. Cause I. Part of me thinks if you're gonna. It's pretty obvious why you would deny it, you're finding that that doesn't meet those things, I don't know if it's. Part of me thinks it needs to say why you're given the opportunity to deny, but on the other hand, you would know that and you would say that, yeah.
And this is a PRCD, not one homeowner coming in for one. Change in the zoning map, like whoever is doing this should have more of an idea of how things are gonna go.
Yeah. They're not gonna be surprised.
Yeah, hopefully, that's, I mean, they shouldn't be if they're doing their preliminary meetings and. Taking the time to plan this out like, like they should be if they're gonna come to us with a PRCD.
And, and listening to the meetings as they go on.
Yeah.
And I think the last word instead of review should be consideration. For the trustees. Cause that leaves it more open, I mean, obviously they're gonna review it, but they're also gonna vote, cause that's what it says.
Yeah.
And just putting a review seems odd.
And I think our other article would say consideration, don't they? Or does Sherry say that in her, did she say that in her postings, like it's? Moving to the.
Has been.
We definitely use.
Has been recommended to. Regional planning for its consideration, I think she's.
Other places for sure.
I hope so.
Cause I am, I think I, I missed a lot in the ninety seconds where I went to the bathroom. I wanted to, we could go back to landscaping plans, number eleven.
Sure.
It's page twelve, well, our page twelve, Tom's page, I have no idea.
Well, I'm on page nine.
It's a, it says landscaping plans in accordance with section, whatever development standard, land standards. Which, I don't, I think that. Some of that is in the development standards, but I don't know if. The state where it says a statement describing the provisions that are to be made. For the care and maintenance of common open space or service facilities shall be provided. I don't really know if that's anywhere else. I don't, I, I think that's kind of important, I'd like to have that as part of the development plan.
Wasn't, didn't that all fall under where it went through like HOA responsibilities?
I didn't really see that specifically in the HOA responsibility. It said something about like. Hmm, now, what does it say? It says. The common open space shall be maintained for purposes set forth in the approved final development plan. So. But is this then saying like? Is requirement that. It, it is set forth in the development plan. Like, outline it, this is what it needs to be.
I feel like that sentence, a statement describing their provisions that already be made, I definitely think that should be. Retained and moved back in that section. You landscaping.
Where does that come from?
Number eleven.
That's. So I had marked that whole paragraph out. Referring back to the development plan standards, but then the landscaping section in development plan standards is a little bit. Loose as far as. How they're gonna care and maintain it.
I don't know about that last sentence, I don't know how important that is, I don't really know what that means, so I can't say.
I feel like, but that is in that. That big section about the open space, I feel like that's covered, but the other part wasn't. Cause it talks about another entity, if it's not the HOA. You have to define who that third party ownership is.
So maybe we just keep that sentence in there. Be a little bit more clear.
Yeah, I think so.
That was my only.
We're restoring a bunch of number eleven.
We're restoring the second sentence of number eleven. At least where it starts with a statement describing. Do we need a, a site grading plan? I don't think that's anywhere else in here, is that something we want? Two foot contour intervals, I don't really, again, I don't know what that means.
We did get them from Joe.
I think, okay. I don't know how much, how important that is.
Well, considering this area is pretty flat. Don't think site grading is necessarily.
But if they're putting the drain swells.
They're putting in swells and all this other stuff that. They should provide something for that. Or zoning inspector can. See if they're following their design plans.
Maybe we don't strike that.
Maybe consider putting it all back in.
We like that one, isn't it?
I mean, that, that area can, that place where it is under eleven can be minimal, but I think maybe that first. Section should go, should be repeated as well, including a site grading plan. I don't, I don't see it anywhere. Else.
I did go, yeah, I went back to the development plan standards and our landscape. I did go, yeah, I went back to the development plan standards and our landscaping isn't very specific there and I didn't see anything about grading either. So. Maybe it should be there, I don't know. Maybe that's not the place to put it. We need to put it under the. Development.
Yeah, there's, there's hardly anything under our landscaping section U. And this is the section that we're including all the architectural design guidelines. Any signs and all that other stuff, so I don't. Mind having. The landscaping plans in there too.
Yeah, I think all that language except if they're proposed. If it's proposed that it's owned and maintained by another entity, which I think is. Covered. But. I mean, they're gonna do entry landscaping. That's usually not a requirement. They're just gonna. Developers do that. They show you what the public. Part of the landscaping is gonna be. And then you're asking for street trees and other details. And you're talking about replacing vegetation, so it's not really landscaping, but. They have a clear sign that they need to show you what kind of vegetation they're gonna. Bring.
Um, I. I do have a couple of comments about thirteen oh eight. Modification of development plan. Under D. Uh substantial departures from the original application application include, but are not limited to the following. One. Two, um. Instead, uh, an increase in overall like coverage of structures. Um, instead of and I put or so that they're not. Uh, three is okay, four, and I, that was your thing about difficult to define, that came out. Uh, a reduction in. Required minimum open space. Instead of approved, I don't know if that was your change or mine.
That must have been yours.
Thank you. A reduction in required minimum open space. Six is out, seven is out.
So does that mean?
I think we could not. Change. Required minimum open space.
Yes.
Well, yeah, if they ask for a reduction. It'd be a major modification.
But we're saying we don't have the authority even to.
Yeah.
To consider it.
You don't think that you would take that out? I'm not.
So it, I mean, I could see a situation where they they come to us with fifty five percent open space. Even though they only need fifty.
Yeah.
And then they come back and say, we need to pair that back a little.
Right.
That would be.
That would be the approved open space, so it would be better to have the required minimum in there instead of.
To leave it, to leave it as approved rather than.
No. We don't want them to reduce the required minimum. If they've come first and said. You know, we'll do fifty five percent and we approve that. If they come back and say, well, we didn't account for some. Heasement or something that we needed to have, so we need to go down to fifty again. There's still being the minimum required.
Yes.
You know, so I don't think in that case we should hold them to the approved.
So you 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 agree that we should change that to re- required minimum?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, eight, so six is out, seven is out, eight. Um, nine, okay. Those were your changes, not mine. Thank you. Um, let me see.
I just thought it cleaned it up.
Um, under E, the last sentence. Unless the application for time extension is timely. Submitted and approved. Maybe that should be submitted in a timely manner and approved, but.
You don't want two OIs on the end of their timely.
And then.
How would they? How did they do? How would they do that? Have you dealt with that any? I mean, we have extensions all the time. Then they just have to get it in. I mean, we're kind of loose about it. It doesn't have to be by our deadline. Usually Stephanie's calling people saying, uh, your subdivisions, two years. You need to out, you need to follow us.
Yeah.
And so we, you know, let them get on the next agenda.
And we're saying, you know, in a timely manner, which is. Kind of loose. Too.
Okay, but I will change it to in a timely manner instead of timely submitted, which is, I don't know what kind of grammar that is. But it's probably exists.
So I said slap another OY on there, timelyly submitted.
It's timely submitted.
It'll be fine.
And then your, your page in red, this page shows where certain details went. Which was helpful.
So we already talked about all that.
Yeah.
I mean.
So under A three. Uh, draw house footprints and lot lines outside the conservation areas based upon the permitted density calculations. You're saying it's unnecessary, maybe I I found it very helpful when Joe brought us the Steiner PRCD that we saw where. The septic fields were and the the house. Um, boundaries were. I don't know if.
I think.
I think after seeing that, the where the house footprints were, that's when we said. Can you? Vary that distance from the road a little bit better, because it it did not look good.
Yeah, I like to see that.
I don't. I think when I took that out, it wasn't that you didn't want to see those. I think it was. That wasn't necessary at the stage where originally appeared.
Sign process that needs to go in the like. Or the.
Yeah, it needs to be on the development plan, but not.
Is it in the development plan now? Is the question then?
Should be under house location, because I put.
Well, it is obviously, I mean. He had squares for each house. They're not all just going to be squares, you know, so there's still. Still going to be some deviations from what is.
It's under.
For house location, I don't think he meant that.
It's at the bottom of the. Page four. Under XX, it didn't have a number. Or letter.
Of house location thirty.
And so, I mean, inherent in the fact that. You're telling where the houses are gonna be. They're gonna have to show where they are.
Can we just include something under house location? A map should be provided. With this description.
Yeah.
We just put that back in. Or should that be part of the procedure? When you have other stuff in there like landscaping plan, why not house footprints?
Yeah, right, under. Under the contents of a development plan, that's where it should be.
Okay. Which is.
Four, five, well.
Thirteen oh five or thirteen oh seven?
You know, seven. And number six. Off of page twelve. I think. Right now it says building setback lines with dimensions of lots and structures, I can put. Footprints. Of structures. And that. Reserves. That makes sure that it's not just the, well, it'll still be a box, but. More of a footprint. And just structures.
And then going back to while we. We're staying on house locations for a second. Um, I think your wording was eighty five percent or more of the house lot should have directed view of common open space. Was that, was that you?
I.
What page are we on?
For us, I think it's page four with house locations, which is.
That was already in your design guidelines.
They are page four. For the rest of us.
And that's typical of conservation subdivisions, but. Not always easy to.
Just I think we're. We're about to change that. To some distance. Rather than a direct view. But. But let's leave it the way it is for now.
Okay.
Well. You know, somehow, somehow. We wanted to reduce visibility from uh, public roads.
I thought, oh, we got that.
Yeah, you screened from.
To reduce visual impact from existing public roads. I think I did change, it was just eighty five percent.
But we're almost done.
I know. I know. It was just eighty five percent, but I changed either front or back, meaning. It was the first half, I don't know. There's lots of examples. It was the first house and it didn't have open space behind it, but there was nothing across the street from it then. That would count. But I think that would get towards your. Goal of, you know, using a distance instead of. It just seemed like if it was a single loaded street, you shouldn't be deemed because you didn't have open space behind you, because you're looking straight across at. Open space.
Um, I think we're gonna discuss it tomorrow.
Okay.
So whatever. Whatever we come up with, well. But I'll let. I'll let them know that this is in here this way. The way that we, that we moved it over to the, the clustered residential conservation district.
Okay.
And maybe we just leave it. Now, we got pushed back from. From a couple of people, one person. Who said, uh. You don't want to leave it like that. Let's see.
Are you talking about the backing up to open space?
Um, or or at least having, having a, um. A view of the open space.
Okay.
You got anything else?
Oh, my God. Can we do it? Don't get too excited yet. I'm sure something else will come up.
And and it's for Scott. Scott, in other townships that have overlay districts. Uh, do they have a trustee hearing?
It. It depends. Usually they do. The Berlin Business Park. Which hasn't, nothing's been through all the way yet, but they do. I think the Orange. Twenty-three overlay. Doesn't, but then I think. The Liberty. It's kind of all over the board, um. More often than not, I think they they do.
I I am a little worried. That. In our, our rush to to get things through. We're. Eliminating some things that people are going to accuse us of rushing through.
Yeah, because they're all here to discuss things with us tonight.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter. They're still gonna.
I mean.
They're still gonna be.
They will.
Well, they're always gonna find something to be pissed about, though. I mean, that's just. Par for the course, right?
And and the trustees will have a discussion in 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 an open session. People can comment during the public session, they can. They can vent their opposition. So it's, it's not advertised as a hearing, but I think if someone has an opposition to it, they they'll have time at the trustees' meeting. Express their, their reserve, their reservations.
Yeah, but there's, there's never a list of what trustees are going to be discussing for their meetings ahead of time. The way a public hearing gets advertised. I I.
Maybe once a few things will slip. We'll get better.
Well, I'm, I'm still a little worried about. You know, lacking transparency.
Are you, are you referencing text changes that we're making, or you're referencing projects going through?
Projects.
Okay. And you're. By the changes we're making, we're making projects go through too quickly, or you're just talking about projects in general?
If if we're eliminating that trustee hearing.
Yeah.
For things, even though. The trustees weren't. Really looking at them ahead of time and. And. Discussing it a lot ahead of time. That was just another formality where the public could come and say, I don't like this. And if it's not a hearing anymore and just an open public meeting, it doesn't get advertised in the Gazette with a description of what it is. And so is that us being sneaky about it? Which realistically, no. It just requires the public to be informed, which. They choose not to be, so I can't.
And and during, during our public hearing, when we vote either to approve or deny it. We can say, you know, it's, it's being passed along to the trustees. Uh, for them to consider it at their meeting on whatever the.
And we always do anyway. That always gets said anyway.
Oh, it's, it's in the public record that they'll be considering it. On a certain date.
And, I mean, this probably goes beyond. Our discussion to something maybe the. I don't know. Like some planning or zoning conference. But I guess there's some. Question of how involved trustee should actually be. And why? If I was a trustee, I would want. Zoning commission. To do ninety five percent of the work. Because they're closer to the public. And I would just kind of be not a rubber stamp at all, but. Just making sure that the right process was followed. And it sounds like you guys, you know. Reviewed this really well. And maybe we. Talked about that a little bit last month, I don't know. But I know there are some, I mean, the, there are some townships that, you know. The trustees spend just as long with a project. As the zoning commission does, and I. Don't necessarily think that that was the way the system was. Set up, but they are the elected officials, so they gotta be the ones that.
I think we are certainly more similar to the first scenario, because oftentimes on on rezonings, the trustees do not even open or look at. The rezoning.
And maybe that was mentioned last time, and that's what I remember.
And so I, I think we are doing. The bulk of the work and they're just trusting that we have done that, but I think the the kicker for Joni is if it doesn't get its public hearing. Unless we change. How our trustee meetings are advertised and itemize what is going to be discussed. Then the public's not really gonna know what's being discussed. To come and.
People only come if they think. Something they're particularly interested in is going to be discussed.
Yeah.
Why didn't they just come to our hearings then?
They, they should.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so. I know what I'm saying, like it.
But typically, they know that we don't have the final say. And the trustees have, in some cases, disagreed with our recommendations.
You don't think that this, so we made a slight change in here that we don't call it a hearing, we just say that it will go to the trustees. I mean, that. Your scenario of making sure people know, I mean, that can still happen, right? I mean, we didn't really change that. They have a. Part to play. It's up to them as to how they wanna publish it, right?
It's also up to the public to remove their heads from the sand and actually.
Yeah. Send a drone out to everybody and tell them what's.
Yes, and that's the consistent issue we have anyway. I didn't know this was happening. I haven't looked at the township website ever. Okay, well, there you go.
Until I got this notice thirty days ago, I had no idea this is that.
Yes, uh, uh, every time.
But you got the notice.
I, I, I mean, I think, um. They would like to back away from the, the detailed hearing process.
And I think we could discuss with Kendra. Hey, could we have? Like when the trustees posting gets sent out? Can, can there be a bit more? Of a list of what's going to be discussed?
There's, there's. I don't believe there's, there. The trustee meetings get a special. It's just back in January when we set up the organizational stuff, there was one that went out saying trustees meetings would be on the X. Third Wednesday.
If we have it posted on the website, as there's a trustees meeting tonight, these are, this is what's on the agenda, does that? Make you feel.
Never seen the agenda on. The website, or either us or the trustees, is that, has anybody?
No, I agree with you, and whether they could be or not.
Hypothetically, I mean, if, if the minutes can be posted, then an agenda can be posted.
Maybe that's something.
Amanda's gonna be mad at me when she listens to this recording and then has to do that, sorry Amanda.
I mean, could that be a takeaway to ask? Them to click, very clarify that situation?
Yeah. And, and this, it. It may be a lot. With very little results. And people may still not show up. Um, people may still ignore everything.
Maybe we could change.
I, I think. The. General public has so much suspicion of public officials anymore. That. If it looks like we're doing something sneaky. I mean, it's just gonna be nasty out there. For all of us.
I, I don't disagree with you on that. On the flip side though, you know, I. You and I both have seen all the next door posts and we consistently comment. We welcome you to join us at our meeting, and here we sit. No public. I mean, how many, how many times can we ask for that and it hasn't changed?
I'm in.
But we appreciate Bob. Okay, is there, is there anything else? I know Mike had, had listed possible review of minutes, but they only got sent out. This afternoon at some point, and I haven't looked at them at all yet. We don't really have time to do them anyway. So.
So can we say we're finished with this one though?
You're gonna come back to us with your finished. Update.
Finished with Drac.
Well, yes.
Yes.
Sure, but I mean, next time will we? Talk about PRD? Or will I? Give you. Maybe let Mike. Comment on that too.
Or will you have turned in a procedures thing from, um, planning committee?
To send a clean copy of this with the changes we made before then, so that hopefully. We could maybe move on to the PRD if we do, if we've checked through all this.
Sure.
I mean, if not, it's not the end of the world.
Yeah, I think it, maybe if we get advanced copies of, of the. To finish the final, um, article then. Um, if there's small typos or things like that, we could just send those to you directly. Um, and work through it pretty quick. Hopefully we just, you know.
Let's be done with it.
Um, and then move on to, to the PRD if that's the next, and I think Mike should weigh in on whether he feels that's the next. But it seems logical that. One thing I did want to ask you, you, have you received copies of the, the two overlay districts that were proposed? You do have those.
There's a procedure and then one.
Yes. But the one is, is actually overlay districts, because there's a, a dark blue version and a live, is it? A dense and a denser version within the same. So we call them overlay districts. Um, so you do have that. Um. I saw the note from Mike that you wanted to be able to weigh in on it. We're gonna hold a hearing on twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
But. That will. Without a doubt be continued until. May fifth, so we'll take into, we'll be, we'll have time.
Yeah, Mike and I. Yeah. He had sent me the drafts and then. I think Kendra sent. Stephanie the drafts, which is fine, and then Amanda had asked, called the office and had chatted with Brad, our other planner. And so. So I sent another, I sent a message out to all three and I just said. Got it. So we know we, we got it, it'll be on our. Twenty-seventh meeting, which won't. Make your twenty-fourth, and then Mike said, yeah, we. We know that, um. I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page, because I know there's a lot of new. Folks that haven't walked through the whole process before, so.
People come to our hearing on the twenty-fourth?
Or maybe you want. You want the overlays. If you get, if the overlays got through smoothly.
Yes, I agree.
People can show up and complain about development plans.
I, I am open to, uh, a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn? It is, uh, nine thirty-four.
Oh boy. Turn off your, uh.
I was on, I haven't been on the web or the. Mobile version of your website before. Kinda hard to find your way around.
It's getting better than it was, I would not say we're playing.